Good evening. Welcome to the June 1st, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors. The first item on our work session is the Pledge of Allegiance by our new student School Board representatives for the upcoming school year. Mahabhin Toopender and Randy Lane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We would like to extend a warm welcome to Mahabhin and Randy as our new student School Board representatives. The student delegate to the school board is a prestigious position that students apply for by submitting an essay that explains why they would be the best representative for the high school. The students who are chosen are student leaders who contribute valuable information to the school board regarding their high school and community experience by attending monthly school board meetings. It is with great honor that I announce the 2021-2022 student delegates to the Upper Darby School Board. Congratulations to Mahabhin Toopender and Randy Lane. We look forward to working with you throughout the school year and welcome you to the team. Our outgoing student School Board representatives, Ume Siddiqua and Curtis Everett would like to give their monthly report and to share some words of wisdom with our new reps at this time.
Good evening. May concluded the last full month of the 2020-21 academic school year. Students took part in many celebratory and recognition events. Eighth grade and high school students all were honored at their annual award ceremonies virtually, in which students were recognized for their outstanding accomplishments throughout this long and challenging year. Our seniors also had their annual scholarship night and were awarded scholarships to help out with the expenses of college and post-secondary plans. Athletes celebrated the end of their spring seasons this month in a season that was full of uncertainty. Congratulations to the cast, tech crew, pit, and all others involved for a wonderful production of The Addams Family put on by the High School Theater Department. Earlier this month, the district took part in the World Day for Cultural Diversity, in which we as a district learned about and celebrated the diverse backgrounds of everyone in our district. Furthermore, yesterday, we celebrated Memorial Day as we paid tribute to all the brave individuals who fought or are currently fighting for our country and our rights to live. As I mentioned, there were very many celebratory events and accomplishments this month.
On May 27th, the top 5% of the senior class, in addition to the fifth graders from our elementary schools and the eighth graders from both the middle schools, were given the opportunity to take part in Student Administration Day. Students were assigned a role and shadowed the administrator or staff member to learn about their job in the district. Students learned a little about what it takes to run a successful school district and how the team of administrators worked together to provide all students with quality education built on opportunity, unity, and excellence. The high school students were even given the task of allocating newly granted funds to the most urgent needs of the district. As part of this project, we discussed mental health awareness and the need to educate students, faculty, and our community. We discussed reactive treatment as well as preventative treatment to assist students and faculty who struggle with their mental well-being. This project gave students, this project gave student administrators a small taste of what it takes to make decisions within the district.
It's hard to believe how quickly the last few months went by and we are already at the end of the school year. This year has certainly been difficult for everyone as we navigated through what online school truly means. However, at the end of the year, regardless of how challenging it was, as a district and as a community, we made it to the end. As a district, we faced many challenges such as figuring out the best schedule for students, making sure each and every student has access to Chromebooks and internet. Teachers had to figure out creative ways to engage students despite not being able to see them in person for most of the year. These obstacles were unforeseen and made this year extremely difficult. However, as Royals, we never gave up. Things were not always perfect and things were still not perfect. Yet, we were able to come together and discuss these issues and develop possible and the best solutions. During these difficult times, the most important lesson that we learned is that communication is imperative to getting through these challenges as it connects families, faculty, teachers, and students and clears misunderstandings. It was through our conversations that we were able to overcome disagreement and meet in the middle.
We want to congratulate the fifth grade and eighth grade students on starting their journey to a new school. A big congratulations to the class of 2021 as they move to their post-secondary plans. We know you will represent the Royal Spirit in whatever path you decide. Curtis and I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to the school board, teachers, staff, students, and the entire Upper Darby community for allowing us to represent the student body and providing the monthly reports on the successes and accomplishments of the Upper Darby Royals. This has been an amazing and enriching experience that we will forever cherish. As we move forward to a new chapter of our lives, Upper Darby will always hold a special place in our hearts. Congratulations to the new student representatives, Mahabhin and Randy. We know you guys will do an amazing job to fulfill the responsibilities of this title. Thank you.
Thank you, Ume and Curtis. You guys did a great job representing your peers and being the student representatives on the board. You represented the students with excellence and we look forward every month to your excellent reports, so we'd like to give you a round of applause for a job well done. If you can indulge me for a minute, I'm just going to allow my board if they wanted to say any, say a congratulations to you guys. I will allow that now.
Ume and Curtis, I just want to let you know that you showed great leadership during the pandemic as the student board members, and it wasn't easy. And I'm so sorry that we never got to, you know, work with you in person or take a picture or all the regular things that we would normally do during a school board meeting, but you all were wonderful and I just wish you the most success as you leave Upper Darby and represent us out in the world. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Carey. Any other board members would like to make a comment? Okay, thank you very much. We look forward to your continued success. The second item on the work session agenda is the honoring of the top 5% of the class of 2021. We'd like to welcome Upper Darby High School Principal Kelly Simone to lead us in the top 5% ceremony.
Thank you so much. This is one of the highlights of the year, so thank you so much. Good evening. Tonight, I am proud to present the top 5% of the graduating class of 2021. Zubair Alam attended Khan Children for Elementary School and Al Huda Mado School for Middle School, likes cricket, has a special talent of having a strong memory, and wants to explore a career in cybersecurity. Assad Ali attended elementary school and most of middle school in Pakistan. He enrolled in Beverly Hills for a few weeks at the end of his eighth grade year. Took three AP courses, participated in the Annenberg Science Symposium, the Aviation Club, and was a member of the Pulstar Surgical Laboratory. Recognized for distinguished honor roll for his entire high school career, honors and awards in Engines Technology, General Science, Biology, and AP Bio. Likes working on cars and is an excellent mechanic and would like to be a physician's assistant. Adakor Alateh attended Primus Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took AP Chemistry, participated in volleyball, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Graduation Committee, was a rock, recognized for distinguished honor roll, Introduction of Foods, Best Offensive Player, provided community service at Lankin Hall Medical Center, and a volunteer, Adelco Parts Cleanup Volunteer, Municipal Library Volunteer, Peer Tutor, and a Sunday School Assistant. Has a special talent of been watching TV shows, being a personal therapist for her friends, and taking multiple naps back-to-back, and would like to be a woman's health nurse practitioner. Hina Ansari attended Highland Park Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took eight AP courses, participated in HIQ, Reading Olympics, the math team, Writers Inc., Spanish National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Ro Kappa Book Club, the Royal Crest, and the French Club. Is recognized for distinguished honor roll, has a special talent as a beautiful singer, provides comic relief in any situation, has excellent video game skills, and wants to be a data analyst. Seko Bamba attended elementary and middle school in Guinea, took AP French, participated in Marine Fitness Club, recognized for honor roll and the French Award. Likes reading, especially a business book such as Rich Dad and Poor Dad and the Snowball, playing basketball, has a special talent of quick retention memory, and wants to be one of the great businessmen or investors. Tina Chabane attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took eight AP courses, participated in choir orchestra, Royal Crest, Yearbook, 24 Club, Royals Math Team, Cross Country, National English Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, Royal Revolution, and Book Club. Recognized for AP Scholar with Distinction, Premio de Bronce, which is National Spanish Exam Recognition, Rotary Student of the Month, Honor Roll Excellence in the Study of AP Lang and Comte, and distinguished honor roll. Provided community service as an English and Spanish tutor on the Pulse Air Project with the DCVA Park Cleanup Services, was a Writing Lab Editor and National Honor Society Tutor. Likes to learn new languages, enjoys reading and riding her bike, has a special talent of memorizing the digits of pi, and would like to be a NASA engineer. Denise Cisco attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in cross-country, indoor track, outdoor track, choir, National English Honor Society, and Science National Honor Society. Recognized as the MVP in cross-country, received the Coaches Award and distinguished honor roll and honor roll. Likes baking, running, dancing, singing, and roller skating, helped set up for dances, provided park cleanup, and assisted with the community barbecue for her church. Has a special talent of TikTok dancing and would like to be a clinical pharmacist. Aleni Demetriadis attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took six dual enrollment courses at Delaware County Community College, participated in National English Honor Society, Educators Rising, Book Club, Reading Olympics as a team captain, Piano Club, and Concert Band. Recognized for distinguished honor roll, Operation Royal Pride Award, likes to travel, swim, and participate in Girl Scouts, volunteered with the Upper Darby High School Thanksgiving Food Drive and Darby Creek Cleanup Association, has a special talent of speaking Greek and playing the flute, and would like to be an elementary school teacher. I am adding in the Upper Darby School District, as will her older sister, right, Dr. Council? Curtis Everett attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in cross-country, track and field, student government as the vice president of the class, school board student representative, choir, wind ensemble, homecoming court, and stay well club. Recognized for distinguished honor roll, captain of cross-country team, captain of the track and field team, Royal Scholar Award, and Student of the Month Award. Likes sports, music, poetry, participated in the PA State Senate Campaign Internship, was his church youth president, and would like to be an Attorney General. Lucy Fikad attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills and Jacksonville Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in concert choir as a homeroom representative, Culinary Wellness and Chill Club, and the UDA Service Club. Recognized for National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, French Honor Society, and Math and Science Department Awards. Volunteered at the Philadelphia Marathon, Parks Cleanup, and at the library. Likes piano, crocheting, calligraphy, and video games, and would like to be a software engineer. Dylan Ford attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took five AP courses, participated in Unified Bachi as a team captain. Tennis Annenberg Science Symposium, Best Buddies, French Club, HIQ, the Superintendent Student Leadership Committee, the Acorn as the editor-in-chief, a rock, Rubik's Cubing Club, and the Robotics Team, recognized for National English Honor Society, National French Honor Society, National Honor Society, Ro Kappa, Science National Honor Society, Concert Choir, Encore Singers, Indoor Drumline, Jazz Band, Marching Band, Musical Orchestra, PMEA District 12 Choir, Wind Ensemble, District Honor Roll, and Making a Difference Award. Likes gaming, hanging out with friends and family, bike riding, technology, and learning new things. Has a special talent of solving a Rubik's Cube and can build a computer, and would like to be a biochemist. Jessica Giann attended St. Cal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated as the vice president for the Science National Honor Society on the UD Robotics and Engineering Team, Upper Darby Arts and Education Service Club, HIQ Team, Choir, Art Club, Royal Computer Science Club, and Cubing Club. Recognized for the Judges Award at the VEXPA State Championship, distinguished honor roll, Spanish II Awards Honor, excellence in expository writing, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, National Honor Society. Likes drawing, gardening, and cooking, volunteered at the Philly Love Run DCVA Park Cleanup, has a special talent as a competitive Tetris player, can sleep for 48 hours straight, and is uncertain of her career path at this time. Nicholas Juddetti attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took nine AP courses, participated in soccer tennis, student government as the treasurer of the class, Lunar Planetary Group, Choir, Encore, Jazz Band, Wind Ensemble, and Cappies, and American Math Competitions. Recognized as an AP Scholar with Honors, volunteered as a math tutor, and would like to be a civil engineer. Rachel Halvin attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in Encore Singers, Concert Choir, Upper Darby Fall Plays and Spring Musicals, UD Theater Society as the president, Royal Crest, recognized for National French Honor Society, co-founder and president, the Acorn, Class of 2021 Student Government Homeroom Rep, Ro Kappa, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society as the president, third-place Senior Individual Performance at Chester National History Day Event, Outstanding Vocalist, distinguished honor roll, French III Honors Award, Excellence in the Study of British Literature, overall excellence in the study of English, fifth place for PMEA District 12 Chorus, eighth place for PMEA Region 6 Chorus. Overall excellence in the study of AP literature, National School Choral Award, provided community service at her synagogue, service with agencies, and as a tutor, can harmonize to songs fairly quickly, imitate a bird chirping pretty well, and write songs and poems oftentimes within a single sitting, and wants to do something in the realm of English, whether that be working in a publisher's office, being an editor, or analyzing pieces of literature throughout history. Javier Cor attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, participated in field hockey, mock trial, student government, chorus, National Art Honor Society, National French Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, and National Honor Society. Recognized for distinguished honor roll, the 2020 Keith Waldman Award, likes baking, playing field hockey, and painting, which is a special talent, volunteered at Sellers Library and park cleanup, and is uncertain of her career path at this time. Simranjeet Cor attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took AP Statistics, participated in Computer Science Club for some time, and bump out United. Recognized for distinguished honor roll throughout high school, Royal Pride, National English Honor Society, and National Art Honor Society. Likes playing video games and volleyball, was a peer tutor, has a special talent of storytelling. And I quote, "My fingers are quite flexible, so I can separate them and make a V shape. For example, I can put my index and middle finger together, and ring finger and pinky finger together, and it makes a V shape. I can do that with different sides of the hand." Simranjeet would like to be a clinical psychologist. Ria Kumar attended Westbrook Park Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took eight AP courses, participated in cross-country, track, Royal Revolution, student government, Royal Crest, Reading Olympics, Book Club, Chorus. Recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Ro Kappa, Spanish National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, STEM Recognition Award, distinguished honor roll, National Spanish Exam Honor, Excellence in the Study of Discourse AP Lang, AP Scholar with Honor Award, Questbridge 2020 College Prep Scholar, and the Questbridge National College Match Finalist. Likes reading, running, and hiking, writing, music, and solving puzzles. Has a special talent of critical thinking, inspiring and motivating others, raising a single eyebrow, and speaking multiple languages, and wants to be a physician. Kimberly Liu attended St. Cal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took three AP courses, participated in field hockey, Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation Service Club, and was a rock, recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society. Likes weightlifting and would like to be a chemical engineer. Kim Lee attended St. Cal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took AP Computer Science, participated in Computer Science Club, Cubing Club, Fishing Club, Chinese Club, recognized for Intro to Accounting Award, distinguished honor roll, Microsoft Basic Award, Operation Royal Pride. Likes playing video games and reading, has a special talent of drawing, and wants to be an environmental scientist. Elizabeth Massey attended Bywood Elementary School and St. Andrews Middle School, took AP Government, recognized for distinguished honor roll for all semesters at Upper Darby, Mathematics Award, and American Studies Award. Likes painting, drawing, sculpting, baking, working with ceramics, and would like to be an architect or work in some other art-related profession. Mia McMullin attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in orchestra string ensemble, Royal Scholars, was a rock, the manager of the swim team, recognized for National Honor Society, historian of the National Spanish Honor Society, National English Honor Society, AP Psych Award, Freshman Orchestra Award, distinguished honor roll, and the National Spanish Exam Honor Award, and wants to be a chemical engineer. Ramana Nazneen attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took two AP courses, participated in field hockey, and UD Arts and Education Foundation Service Club. Recognized for distinguished honor roll all four years, National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Award, and outstanding achievement for business law and management. Likes sketching, baking, sports, volunteering, and watching movies. Volunteered at the Villanova Special Olympics, Philadelphia Marathon, Our Closet, 69th Street International Festival, Brad Shanner 5K Music Man Festival, Habitat for Humanity, and YMCA Food Drives. Has a special talent of sketching, baking, and sewing, and would like to be a financial analyst. Jessica Nguyen attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in choir and chorus service club. Recognized for statistics and ceramics, likes photography, painting, drawing, volunteered in her church youth group, and would like to go into the field of nursing. Fee Nguyen attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in the Lunar Planetary Club, American Math Competition, Math Madness, recognized as an AP Scholar, likes reading and art, and wants to work in IT. Max Peters attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took 10 AP courses, participated in baseball for four years varsity level, soccer as a captain, Lunar Planetary Club, math team, and engineering team. Recognized for Science National Honor Society, an AP Scholar with Distinction, and a National Merit Scholarship finalist, and would like to be a researcher. Alfonso Raharjo attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in swim team as captain, math team, the engineering team, and the cubing team, Cubing Club, excuse me. Recognized for being the Secretary of Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, Aldelco Honorable Mention in Swimming, AP Scholar, AP Scholar Honors, Pre-Calc Award, and distinguished honor roll. Likes swimming, speed-solving Rubik's Cubes, and chess. Was a teacher's aide for St. Andrew's CCD program, has a special talent of speed cubing, and would like to be a computer or software engineer. Anisha Rukra attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took three AP courses, participated in Royal Revolution, Upper Darby High School Service Club, Chorus Choir, Animal Service Club, Handcrafting Club, Culinary Wellness and Chill Club. Recognized for distinguished honor awards for four years, National Spanish Exam Award for proficiency, likes baking, cooking, creating, editing, journaling, reading self-development books, fiction or comic, handcrafting, has a special talent of holding up her arms in the air for six to nine minutes, empathy, and strong intuition, and would like to be a full-time creator of her desired reality. Choya Rashid attended elementary school and middle school outside of the United States, recognized for distinguished honor roll, likes to travel, and wants to be a nurse. Ashika Sharma attended St. Cal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in Culinary Wellness and Chill Club, volleyball, recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, distinguished honor roll, Mandarin Language Award, and AP Scholar. Likes reading, volleyball, and traveling, volunteered at the municipal library in the summer, a tutor, and would like to be a neonatologist. Ume Siddiqua attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in Annenberg Science Symposium, Upper Darby Society of Ethics, Royal Crest, Royal Student Government, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Teams Engineering, the math team, and robotics. Recognized for the Royal Leader Award, Delaware Valley Science Fair category winner, overall excellence in the study of English, US Government, Spanish Four Honors, distinguished honors award, AP Scholar with Honors, a Questbridge National College Match Finalist, likes photography, coloring, biking, and volunteering, was on the teen advisory board, and student representative for Upper Darby Historic Commission, and our school board student representative. Has a special talent of face the cookie when you eat the cookie from forehead to mouth, and would like to be a physician or surgeon. Taznim Siddiq attended St. Cal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took five AP courses, participated in tennis, Upper Darby Arts and Education Service Club, Royal Revolution, recognized for president of National Spanish Honor Society, Secretary of National English Honor Society, Treasurer of the Science National Honor Society, Service Committee Chair of Ro Kappa, National Technical Honor Society, National Honor Society Distinguished Honor Roll, Making a Difference, Kid Point of Light, Rotary Club Service Award, Genetics Award, English Award. Likes playing tennis and volleyball, painting and drawing, and video games. Volunteered for Upper Darby Municipal Library, Branch, and tutored. Has a special talent of been watching an entire season of TV, can parallel park, and wants to be a physician. RuPauli Singh attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in UD Arts and Education Service Club, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Honor Society, Photography Club, and Soccer. Likes calligraphy, volunteered at food distributions for YMCA, parks cleanup, arts festivals, clothing distributions, and marathons, and would like to be a data scientist. Margaret Smith attended Rahnemick Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in orchestra choir, encore singers, varsity field hockey, JV basketball, was a rock, school government, powder puff, American Math Competitions, Math Madness, Annenberg Science Symposium, Yearbook Club, Teams Engineering, recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, distinguished honor roll, English Award, numerous Science Fair awards, the Keith Waldman Award, President's Education Awards Program, Athlete of the Week for Field Hockey, various Central League Athletic honors. She DJed for Rahnemick Harvest Festival, provided tutoring, excuse me, and would like to be a mechanical engineer. Mamona Talukter attended both elementary school and middle school outside of the United States, took AP Computer Science, participated in National English Honor Society, Badminton Debate Club, College Possible, Let's Get Ready, and the ASL Club. Recognized for distinguished honor roll all semesters, Royal Pride, likes reading and knitting, volunteered on the teen advisory board at municipal library, tutored, the Upper Darby International Festival, the Philly Marathon, awareness for Pancreatic Cancer Marathon, has a special talent of storytelling, and is uncertain of her career path. Rachel Tang attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, participated in Chinese Club, National Art Honor Society, and Chorus. Likes art and drawing, and would like to be a software engineer. Brian Tiara attended both elementary and middle school outside of the United States, participated in varsity soccer for two years, recognized for honor roll and Royal Pride Award, likes to play the guitar, and wants to join the Air Force. Catherine Tran attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took five AP courses, participated in tech crew, orchestra, and choir. Recognized for National English Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, distinguished honor roll, honor roll, and excellence in British literature. Likes reading, knitting, baking, and has a special talent of card tricks, and would like to be an English teacher at Upper Darby High School. Talveh attended elementary school and middle school in Vietnam, participated in Chinese Club, likes making dolls, playing badminton, participated in the Dr. Martin Luther King Day of Service, and has a special talent of dedication and logical thinking, and would like a career in health information management. Jolynn Wangham attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took AP Art and AP Computer Science Principles, participated in marching band, concert band, wind ensemble, recognized for National Art Honor Society, National Honor Society, Ro Kappa, distinguished honor roll, Art Major II Award, and AP Studio Art Award. Likes drawing and finding new music, volunteered at the music festivals, has a special talent of talking like Stitch from Lilo and Stitch, and wants to work in animation as a storyboard artist. Ethan Morton attended Garreford Elementary School and Jacksonville Middle School, took AP English Language and Composition and AP Computer Science Principles, participated in track and field, tennis, DECA, and Cubing Club. Participated in track and field, tennis, DECA, and Cubing Club. Is recognized for being a Royal Scholar, Distinguished Honor Roll, and the Algebra I Award. Likes photography, running, and cooking, provided period editing service, has a special talent of solving a Rubik's cube, thinking visually, and a pretty decent storyteller, and would like a career in nursing. Jason Williams attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in lacrosse, DECA, FBLA, Royal Scholars, and Choir. Recognized for Distinguished Honor Roll all four years, captain of the lacrosse team, likes basketball and lacrosse, video games, and spending time with family. Volunteered for audiovisual services at church and the church food drive. Has a special talent of photographic memory and lacrosse, and would like a career in investment banking and corporate finance. And with that, I am proud to announce and congratulate the Upper Darby High School Class of 2021 Top Five Contestants.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simone. That is always excellent. Every time I listen to that list and I see all of the things that the kids do, it always makes me feel like I don't do enough in the course of a day.
They're amazing.
Amazing, and we're proud to call them ours. The next item on the agenda is the Service to Children Award. Since 1999, the Service to Children Award has been presented to a wide range of role players within our school district community for shaping, protecting, and enhancing the lives of our most valuable resources, our children. Now, in its 22nd year, Upper Darby School District continues in the tradition of recognizing the recipient of this prestigious award for their unselfish dedication to our children, serving as a role model for inspiration and emulation. We are blessed to work with so many in our organization who exemplify these qualities every day and can very well receive this recognition. This year, we have selected a person whom we feel has demonstrated the hard work, flexibility, collaboration, teamwork that provides the opportunity, unity, and excellence our students deserve. We are pleased to announce that our Service to Children Award recipient for 2021 is Kelly Simone, the Upper Darby High School Principal. But wait, there's more.
Oh, boy.
Kelly Simone joined the Upper Darby School District in 2011 as an Assistant Principal at Beverly Hills Middle School, then became the Principal of Beverly Hills Middle School in 2014, then Principal of the Upper Darby High School in 2017. Kelly's commitment to the Upper Darby School District is evident. I had the distinct pleasure to watch her work as the Principal of Beverly Hills when my sons were at that school, and then she moved to the high school and served as the principal there. As you know, the skills needed to be successful at the middle school are very different than the ones necessary to be successful at a very large high school. I watched her make this adjustment and transition to provide the students, staff, and community with the very specific needs at each level. I asked to meet with her as a parent at BH when my oldest son was there, and she met with me and gave me an audience, which I was very impressed with and grateful for. Now, as a school board director, I see the same Kelly, committed to excellence, customer service, and children. I am happy that I can speak from firsthand experience about what I observe and experience, and I am thrilled that the board enthusiastically supported this decision to award Kelly in this fashion. Some people shine in every scenario, and I think it's fair to say that Kelly is one of those people. Please help me welcome our 2021 Service to Children Award recipient, Ms. Kelly Simone. Principal Simone, I know you're emotional, but would you like to say a few words?
First, thank you. That's extremely unexpected, and I love this place. I always have, I always will. This place is a family, and it's the best-kept secret out there. I love being a part of it, and I just thank you so much for the opportunity that you've given me. I'm more than grateful, so thank you so much.
You're very welcome. Thanks to Rhonda, Kelly's family is joining us virtually. We wanted to open it up for the family to say a few words as well if they wished to.
Family, go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, Kel, congratulations.
Way to go, Kelvow.
Love you, sis.
Congrats, Kel. Love you, babe. Couldn't be prouder.
You're the best. Love you, Kel. Congrats.
Kelly, I don't know if you can hear me or not, because I think we may have screwed it up.
We hear you, Mom. Go ahead, Mom.
Oh, thank God. We heard the whole speech, and it was fantastic. And I just want to say, we're so proud of you, and we know how much pride you have in your work and in your school. We know how much you love it, but more important, you've always shown how much you love the kids, and what they can do and what they can accomplish. And you've always gone out of your way to make sure they try to be the best they can be. And that's what a principal is to do. So we're so proud of you, and we love you, and congratulations.
Amen, Mom. Couldn't have said it any better.
Thank you.
She gives 150%. She goes to work every morning, early, leaves late, and comes home and continues to work. And that's all I could say, is that she really loves going to work every day for Upper Darby School District. So congratulations, hon. Love you. Couldn't be prouder.
Great job.
Proud of you, Kel. Well deserved, babe.
Thank you, family.
And to the Upper Darby Board, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to hear her speak and to let us, give us the opportunity to speak to her. It was really awesome for you to do that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Your tribute was awesome. You didn't need to hear me speak. You could have just let them speak. That was awesome. So thank you very much.
Okay, guys. Bye. Have a good night.
Thanks again. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Thank you. Congrats, Kel.
Congrats, Kel.
Hi, love you guys. Thank you. Love yous.
Love you, Kel. We'll talk soon.
So, President Brown, that was about 45 members of Kelly Simone's family. Her mom, her husband, her brothers, yeah, lots of people.
That's awesome. Great representation. Definitely loved it. Okay, all right, change directions just a little bit. The next item, or the final item on the work session agenda, is the recognition of our outgoing student representatives. We kind of did this a little bit earlier when we recognized our new ones, but I want to do them a service and just talk about them a little bit, Ume and Curtis. I want to thank Ms. Ume Siddiqua and Mr. Curtis Everett personally on behalf of the School Board of Directors for their dedication and commitment to the Upper Darby School District community. They took the responsibility of providing student voice and insight into their peers' thinking very seriously. They were able to transition to their role in the midst of a pandemic with such poise and confidence. Vice President Curry talked about that. Their leadership was much needed as we continue to work through some very critical matters this school year. We thank them for their very thorough monthly reports on happenings in schools across the district. We also want to thank Ume and Curtis for using their voice to address social justice and racism. They helped us understand and further, they helped us understand the stress that students are experiencing during this pandemic and the type of support they need from the adults around them. Your participation in the district's Upper Darby Rising Initiative was impassioned and focused on what is best for students. We also found out that they are great talk show hosts. We received rare reviews about their work on one of our new social media features called the Royal Talk Partnerships in Education, in which they interviewed some of our local leaders, helping the community to get a better picture of what the police department, fire department, and EMT provides in service to our community, how to access these resources, and how to stay safe. Ume and Curtis have supported many other district initiatives throughout the school year as well. Ume and Curtis, you are fearless, authentic, and full of integrity. You are good listeners and amazing communicators. You provide the lens that we always want to table when discussing issues and making decisions. You are amazing young people who will go on to represent your alma mater wonderfully and to do great things for the world in which we live. We appreciate you and thank you for your service to the Upper Darby School District and the School Board of Directors. Congratulations on your post-secondary plans. Ume will be attending the University of Pennsylvania, and Curtis will be attending Harvard University. We are so proud of you. Thank you and your parents and your families as well for supporting you in your service. Okay, during this unprecedented time, while social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while pandemic-related restrictions imposed by Governor Wolf and any local authorities are still in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures document outlines expected departures from those normal operating procedures and the policy justifications for such departures. At the start of each board meeting held while pandemic-related restrictions are in place, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School Board finds it necessary to hold these virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near-real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded, and the recording is made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGarry, can you talk about how the public can participate in tonight's meeting, sir?
Yes, Board President Brown, during the pandemic, the Board of School Directors have made every effort to continue to engage the public in every way, shape, and form as if they were attending the meetings in person. Tonight will be no different. Prior to 7:30 this evening, as is the case if you came to an in-person session, general comments were to have been received by the board. At Board Meeting Comments, again, Board Meeting Comments@uprdarbsd.org or phone in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. General comments on board reports can come in prior to the board taking action on those reports. Same process, Board Meeting Comments@uprdarbsd.org or 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Breathe the process. The expectation is that the member of the public leave their name, address, and the specific agenda item or board report they'd like to comment on. General comments should have been general comments for Agenda Item Number 21.
Thank you, Dr. McGarry. The regular virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:10 PM for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call Board Secretary, Mr. Rogers, please.
Dr. Hague?
I am present.
Mr. Des Neuer?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. War Savage?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mr. Neal?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
I am present and can hear the proceedings.
Mrs. Mitchell?
I am present.
Mrs. Currie?
I am present.
Mr. Brown?
Present, thank you, sir. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language requiring board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." And Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" will remove the words that read "present at a board meeting." Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say "I oppose" and state your name. Anyone abstaining, please say "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of May 11th, 2021, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter, the secretary, please, Mrs. Williams.
The reporter, the secretary, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carried. The reporter, the treasurer, please. Mr. Neal?
Thank you, President Brown. The reporter, the treasurer, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying "I oppose" and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying "I abstain" and state your name for the record. The motion carried.
So, the budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and are recorded as a part of the record. No vote is required.
We will now have an update on the Education and People's Services Committee report. Vice President Curry will read the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. I mean, thank you, President Brown. I'm sorry.
It will be you.
We had a, I'm sorry, let me pull it up. The Education and People's Services Committee had a committee meeting on Tuesday, May 25th, and we had several agenda items, and I'm just going to read the summary. There were three agenda items and a policy board update. The first agenda item was an additional targeted support and improvement, the ATSI update, which requires board approval this evening. The district administration will provide an update, did provide an update to the ATSI school plans according to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, PDE, established approval timeline. This item required, requires board action this evening and correlates to all goals of the district's comprehensive plan. The other, the next item, agenda item, was the Upper Darby Rising, which was informational. They actually went first last Tuesday. The Catalyst Conversation Team, Harris Sokoloff, Linda Brightstein, Brian Armstead, and Chris Satullo, presented the Upper Darby Rising Final Report. The final report was a cumulation of seven community forums, four of which were specific affinity groups, Black African-American diaspora, immigrant business, and private and parochial schools. The final three were open community forums. Topics that were discussed included the project timeline, four common themes, the affinity forums, community forums, and the UD Rising Principals with Action Steps. and the UD Rising Principles with action steps. This item was informational and correlated to Goals 1, 2, 4, and 6 of the district's comprehensive plan. Agenda Item 3 was the Upper Darby High School Scheduling Update. Board action is required this evening. Mrs. Kelly Simone, Mr. Tim Lambert, and Mr. James Finch, and a student representative, presented the proposed changes to the high school schedule. In December 2020, the district initiated a project to review the possibility of adjusting the high school schedule to better align it with student needs and current education opportunities. Multiple committees were formed representing associated parties, and a significant amount of stakeholder feedback was received. A final recommendation was compiled from the committee's discussions and has undergone extensive review by the high school administration and staff to ensure completeness and viability. This item requires board approval this evening, and it correlates to the Goals 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 of the district's comprehensive plan. And last but not least, there was Agenda Item 4, Policies, which requires board action this evening on the Policy 121 on Field Trips. At this time, Mr. Marshall?
So, at this time, we do have one addendum to Agenda Item Number 3 from last Tuesday night. I'm going to ask Ms. Kelly Simone to give a brief update on the high school scheduling project to be included as part of tonight's vote as well. Ms. Simone?
Thank you so much. Since we last presented, we reviewed the proposed schedule, considered feedback from various stakeholders, and adjusted it based on that feedback. Please consider the revised schedule proposed tonight before final vote. We acknowledge the concerns about the time allotted for lunch, and as a result, removed the homeroom period from the schedule, added time to the flex period for a total of 36 minutes. In doing so, we eliminated students having to move from one location to another, which was presented as a concern if students are rushed to eat before their next transition. Therefore, students can use the 36-minute flex time to work and eat and do not have to rush through the 10-minute homeroom period. Since we also eliminated transition time, we added additional instructional minutes to each of the block synchronous in-person periods. Therefore, synchronous in-person periods are now 60 minutes in length, the flex lunch period is now 36 minutes in length, and the asynchronous periods in the AM remain 21 minutes in length. The recommended change does not impact the time allotted for students arriving to campus. Again, the schedule provides the flexibility, allows for all students to attend school in person daily, and does not impact the programs or access to electives, and promotes the multiple pathways to graduation.
Thank you. And this is also found in Board Docs as well as the attachment under the Section 9.1. And again, this is a change or an addendum to the presentation from last Tuesday night for the board's consideration this evening on the vote on the Instruction and Curriculum Report for the high school schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I'm going to turn it back over to Board President Brown.
Dr. McGary, did you want to comment on that? I think you wanted to actually see the changes, so I'll let you.
Yeah, I was just kind of hoping, as Mrs. Simone went through that, that we could review it in the public. I know there's been conversations and questions about transparency, process, and communication. And before the board moves this forward, I want, you know, the public, obviously, and the students and this board to understand that I think the high school administration's put in a lot of time and effort to meet mandates or potential changes. And coming out of this pandemic, we're trying to respond to several different scenarios that we may be facing. And so, it's not for a lack of transparency. I recognize as the superintendent that there are times when, unfortunately, engagement happens when things are announced that might not sit well with people. But these conversations have been happening for some time. There were surveys that went out over a year ago regarding the sleep study. There's a lot of momentum to see the sleep study put into place. The problems at that time, again, as a review, simply put, the school district did not have the $1.5 or $2 million that it needed. We received questions about moving the schedule back to 8:30 and extending the school day till 4 o'clock. Those are contractual issues. There are also after-school activity concerns, and busing students at 8:30 in the morning is also a transportation concern and would be a cost. So while there seems to be what some would say are simple solutions, obviously, we recognize that they're very complex. I think the high school administration has done a lot of goodwill in trying to make this schedule work, and they're trying to use the technology and what we've learned from the pandemic to provide that flexibility to our students and our community. Comments that have come in about student engagement and opportunities. We have met with students. Students came in on Friday on their day off to talk to us and share their input. I know a survey went out today, and 70% of the students who responded to the survey today responded in favor of seeing the schedule change. Do we recognize that the schedule has areas where there are students who feel like there's lost opportunities? Sure, that's the perspective that's out there. I don't know that everybody has really listened to what Mrs. Simone and Mr. Finch have done to articulate that. There are some comments that will be coming in tonight that we'll be here to address if we need to, because I know this is a serious discussion. I do want to be clear that a lot of time and effort went into this over the last year and a half to two years to make these decisions. And I think Mrs. Simone and Mr. Finch and the high school administration team, the students that were involved, I know I had conversations with Curtis and Ume recently on Student Administration Day. So there's been a lot of back and forth with all of these decisions, and I think that we would all agree administratively, and I know this board would, that we don't make these decisions lightly. So I just appreciate your opportunity. I hope, if anything, regardless of the outcome of this decision tonight, that everybody in this community understands how complex it is to lead this organization and to be the principal of a school like Upper Darby High School to make these decisions.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and thank you, Vice President Curry, for reading the summary from that meeting. A detailed summary of that meeting, including the public comments, can be found in Board Docs. We will now have an update on the May 25 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mr. Fields?
Tuesday, May 25th, the Finance and Operations Committee met virtually, as well as people in the boardroom at 6:00 PM. Two items were discussed, one for board action, one was just informational. The first item, Safe Routes to School Initiative, this will require board action. District administration shared its recommendation to investigate, review, and document safe walking paths, and hopefully biking paths, for all Upper Darby School District students through a consulting services firm. The final deliverable of the project is a school-based map that includes transportation and eligibility, boundary, safe walking paths, crossing guard locations, and PennDOT-approved hazardous streets. This item correlates to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. We have kids walking a long way to schools, and this is a much-needed item. There is also a budget update for the 2021-2022 school year. This is just informational. District administration provided an update on the 2021-2022 budget. The presentation revisited timelines, historical data, and potential changes to the final budget. This item correlates to Goal 1 of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. And those were the only two items for the Finance and Operations Committee. Back to you, Board President Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. A detailed summary of that meeting, including the public comments, can also be found on Board Docs. The Instruction and Curriculum Report, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second that. David Neal?
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Thank you, President Brown, and thank you for everyone joining us this evening. And thank you, Ms. Simone, and the high school staff and the administrative team for all of the hard work that was put into even drafting this schedule. And to put this into perspective for everyone, I'm one of the board members who is an alumni of the district. And of the alumni that are serving on the board, I probably am the most contemporary to what the soon-old schedule, in one form or another, had been. And just to give you just a little taste for what that schedule had been for someone who had honors courses and who had chorus, choir, and encore singers, this schedule honestly does open up a lot of, would have, opened up a lot of opportunity for a kid like me who had it tough at home and really, really thrived in the school and instructional time that I had in one form or another. I'm looking at opportunities such as, back in the day, when I had choir and encores, those were split into skinnies. But again, put this into perspective, a skinny was half a block. That's approximately 40 or 45 minutes. Coming from my Block 2 bio class, having to go across the hall and into the pack and through there into the choir room from wherever I was coming from, that took up time as well. And in addition to the fact that because of all the courses that I had scheduled, it took away from my lunch, I literally had to have my late father and my mom sign permission to allow me to eat my lunch during class. And when you're talking about things in the realm of musicianship, and how Bengliyan likes to say that she raises that bar of excellence, and I'm very happy to say that she's still doing that to this day, you know, it's really hard to teach a vocal class, or really any class, where you have, in this sense, over 100 kids eating their lunches in a choir room, and you're supposed to worry about warm-ups and all this, that, and the third. It's really hard to get into that musicianship piece in the span of only 45 minutes because you're talking about travel time to the class. Getting settled, having to eat your lunch, then worrying about warm-ups, people having to chat, you know, it's high school. It's sociable moments, and that cuts back on the time that can be spent on actually learning the curriculum or the criteria. And I say all that to express my concern about the fact that this is a high-impact decision on something, changing something that has stood pretty much the same way for the better part of 20 years. I mean, if I'm able to relate that close to it, I think that probably tells you we probably were overdue for some kind of update, honestly. And I do understand the concerns that other people do have about the things that they feel as though are opportunities that might be evaporating or taken away from them. And I get that. And I do understand that. I was one of the students who suffered from bad policymaking that didn't address the needs of the whole student, of all district populations that we serve. And when we talk about making a decision, again, about changing the schedule, I come back around to the fact that it has been in its current form for over 20 years. It provided some kind of sense of stability. Coming out of the pandemic, people are really nervous. They're scared. They don't know what to expect next unless it's something that they're familiar with. They're familiar with the schedule. And those are concerns that I'm hearing too. And that is why, at least on this particular item, on this particular evening, I feel as though we would have benefited more from an extended period of public comment. I do understand that this has been worked on for an extended period of time, and we do have to make judgment calls on things as they arise. And this isn't like something that came out of nowhere. This is, again, something that people have been working on for an extended period of time. But I feel as though I would be in a better position to support the Instruction and Curriculum Report as a whole if we had an extended public comment period. But for purposes of this evening, I intend on voting for the report as stated, with the exception of the schedule as proposed. So I am in support of this schedule change now. I was part of the core committee, and this project has been headed by Tim Lambert, and he has been spinning, you know, 10 different plates during this entire time with many different committees from many different stakeholders. And a lot of concerns were brought up in the meantime regarding this and that. Those concerns were addressed. And they are very open to changing the schedule. And this final product is really a product of all those working committees, working through the issues and making sure that we have the most equitable schedule possible. And with, you know, Kelly Simone, the principal of the Upper Darby High School, and a large concern was regarding lunch, and we have Wendy Elgart, the extraordinaire, that oversees that. I believe, and I have full faith, that if any changes need to occur in the future, that they will be ready to go, and they'll be ready to listen to the public, to the students, to the board, and even to themselves from what they see from observing and evaluating the schedule change. So because of my faith in our leadership in this district, I will be voting yes tonight for this schedule change. Thank you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Who's next on the list? Oh, Dr. Hague, sorry.
Thank you, President Brown. I want to sort of reiterate some of the things that Mr. Neal said and also that I said during the committee meeting. And I want to acknowledge Mr. War Savage's concern. I agree. I think if we all, if in a perfect world, this, we would have had a longer period between the committee meetings and this decision. We would have had more time to sort of go through these things. But it is certainly true that the team that worked on this, including James Finch and Kelly Simone and Tim Lambert and everyone else, 100% listened to the feedback that they got. And I just want to remind people that among the desired changes from the schedule were to reduce the number of students on campus at one time, to switch, to potentially switch to periods, from a block-style schedule to a year-long-period-style schedule. Those two changes were not made because of the feedback from the student group and the high school team and the core team. Last week, I was extremely concerned about the idea of a 10-minute lunch, and the team very quickly turned around a new idea that gives us now a longer lunch period. So while I cannot deny that this feels like it's moving very, very fast, it has been in the works since December. These decisions aren't easy to make, and I want to acknowledge that I still do have some concerns about how the asynchronous time is going to work and about just kids not having as much time to socialize. But I think it's really, really important, anytime you're making a change, to remember the things that you want to improve, right? It's so easy to see the negatives of the new and forget about the negatives of the old. And so, I'm convinced at this point that while I have concerns, those are balanced by the benefits that I think that we're going to get from this new schedule. So I thank everyone for working on it, and I really hope that any community members who are still concerned about it will continue to talk to people and learn more about this schedule, because I know there are still a lot of persistent misunderstandings out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. I'm going to piggyback on your statement and Mr. Neal's statement as well. And mine is more global. I'll talk specifically about my own feelings about the schedule. But I just want to state overall, our job is hard. We, it's nine of us. We have a hard job. It's a volunteer position. We have a lot of responsibility, and we take pride in that. But it's difficult. There are no absolute right or wrong answers. Nobody's going to grade our tests at the end of it, and they say, oh, you did that right. We do the best we can with the information we provide. We have awesome administrators who provide us with a wealth of information, and we have to just use our minds and our hearts and make the best decision that we can based on what we know. We are stakeholders. We have children. Some of us have children in this district, and some of us will have children in this district. So we are not, we're not in the business to hurt children. We're in the business to do the greater good, to do the best we can with the information that we have. And I felt that needed to be said, because when I was, before I was on the school board, I was very active in the district, and I attended school board meetings. I did not agree with every decision the board made, but I certainly respected their right to make that decision, and I trusted them that they was operating with their mind and in their heart to do what they thought was best for kids. Sometimes I agreed, sometimes I didn't, but I certainly respected it and accepted it, because I felt ultimately that they had the students' best interests at heart. We are no different. You may agree with some of the things we do. You may disagree with some of the things we do, and that's okay. But just know that we have the students' best interests at heart. And this schedule, as you can see, has been tuned, fine-tuned, and thought about and picked apart. And we think what we're left with is something that's very robust and is going to do the greatest good for the kids and the families and the community in this district. That's what we operate on, and that's what I'm very comfortable with. I sleep very good at night when I come home from a school board meeting. Of course, they're four or five hours long, but I'm very comfortable with decisions that we make for that reason. Thanks.
I just would like to just acknowledge the parents I, I just would like to just acknowledge the parents out there who really have strong concerns about this schedule. As Board President Brown said, and some of the other board members spoke about how difficult it is to make decisions when you're making it for the entire district. And we often think about our own children, really, when we're looking at these types of decisions that need to be made. I stand on the space of the equity lens that we have been working so diff, so diligently on here in Upper Darby. I've been a parent in this district for a very long time and continue to see things that I would like to see changed and altered. I mean, just being completely transparent. Sitting in this seat now and looking at this schedule change and seeing how much was put into it to make it equitable for all students is where, is where I see, and what I see has happened. But I would like to acknowledge the parents that do have those concerns. And I would also like to acknowledge the teachers who have similar concerns for, they want to do the best for the students here as well. And so I just, as we, as we move forward with making the decision tonight, however it turns out, just know, Upper Darby community, that there are a lot of decisions that are being made in the best interest of all the students here. And so I just wanted to say that because I know that as a parent, as a, as a parent who is having a child move into the middle school, I have similar concerns about the way things are going to go, but we just have to continue to work together and have our voices heard. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Carey. You reminded me about one thing that I failed to mention. The parents that I did talk to, because they, you know, we received a lot of emails, passionate emails, well-thought-out emails, and we just see parents who care about their children. And I had a conversation with, with some of them, and I didn't debate the merits of, you know, my opinion versus theirs. I just listened to them, and I explained to them what my perspective was. And, and the ones that I talked to were reasonable. They listened, and they, and a few of them felt differently about what, where they started with where we ended up after the conversation. So sometimes people just want to be heard, and they, they do bring some good points to the, to the forefront. Thank you. I'm sorry. That's all I have. Was there any other board members that needed to speak? I think it, Ume, Ume Sidikua, please, we'd love to hear your voice.
Hello, everyone. I want to speak about the new schedule for the upcoming school year. I think the goals of this new schedule are great. However, it is at the expense of learning and education. I agree, there are many positives to this new initiative, such as prioritizing students' sleep schedule, reducing behavioral issues, and providing a virtual classroom for students that are more comfortable at home. However, the number one priority for our schools should always, always, always be education. Even if this new schedule meets each of the goals I mentioned earlier, the follow-up question should always be, is it at the expense of learning time for all the students? A concern I have about this new schedule specifically is if a student takes multiple AP courses, they have to rotate between each classes during the school week. By taking away the skinny period, it is taking away face-to-face instructional time from these students for an entire semester. While there's a small percentage of students in advanced placement courses than the rest of the school, instructional time is still a necessary component in preparing them for the exam in May. Schools, simply put, is a place where students come to learn. While these goals are supposed to enhance learning in our classrooms, there is nothing to enhance if our students are not in the classrooms in the first place. It is my hope that you reconsider this schedule to accommodate the needs for all the students that attend our schools. While there may not be a perfect solution, and revising the plan might mean starting from square one, I think it is a worthwhile effort. I do want to acknowledge the efforts made by the committee and want to thank you guys for always giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion.
Thank you, Ume. We really appreciate your perspective, and your perspective is really one that we value because you're the one that's directly affected by the changes we make. Dr. McGary?
Yes, I definitely appreciate Ume and Curtis's opinion and perspective in conversations, and, and we, we've definitely allowed that input. And not to discredit that, I mean, obviously, there's conversations from students who have different opinions, and I think this is proof that we, we take student empowerment and student voice into consideration when we do. To that end, this morning, today, Mrs. Simone in the high school did allow for student input. And I agree with Ume. There's definitely students who have different thoughts and perspectives. With that said, you know, from the survey results of the students who participated today, seventy percent of them do see this schedule as something to move forward with. I do think to Ume's comments about AP students, I think Mr. Finch is online tonight, and he want, I think he wants to comment on statistically how many students are involved in this historically, as far as the AP conversation comes up. James, are you, are you on, online? Can you unmute?
To, to, you know, address that concern about AP students, there are some students who can, in our pre-pandemic schedule, could possibly opt out of taking a lunch and participate into skinny periods in addition to their four blocks. Now, the, those skinny periods in our pre-pandemic schedule, they're only thirty-seven minutes, you know, not, I hear a lot of times they're being quoted as forty-two, forty-five minutes, but they were thirty-seven minutes total. And, and what happened is, you know, with the addition of that skinny period on the, in the semester that is opposite the full-block section of that, of those AP courses, those skinny periods actually created a lot of scheduling conflicts for students with AP. So students couldn't take every combination of two APs that were offered in the same semester. Okay, that, they, they could not do that because of that skinny period that was done, you know, by, by, you know, prior schedulers with the greatest of intent to try to give them, you know, more access to, and longer access to that material. But it created a conflict which this flex period actually takes away. Now, that aside, in looking back through the 2019, 2020 school year, so I didn't look at this, you know, this pandemic school year, I looked back to last year, I found there were only twenty students out of our, you know, about three thousand eight hundred and fifty students who chose to forego their lunch for, you know, both semesters and take us up on that opportunity. Okay, so that was the number of students last year who did, who did that, who, you know, fore, forewent the lunch, you know, didn't, didn't participate in the lunch and did the AP for, for both semesters. Only twenty.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for that information. Are there any other comments? Okay, Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
Our first comment is from Victor Roush, located at 59 Revere Road in Drexel Hill. Comment was received on the first at 4:17 PM via email regarding the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Comment begins, "I am mystified at the rationale for cutting live instructional time. No explanation has been offered for why live interaction with teachers is being cut to four hours. While the past year and a half have been an unprecedented challenge due to the pandemic, I see no reason why the school cannot continue to actual full instruction in the fall of 2021. I am sorry to sound dismissive, but quote-unquote 'asynchronous' class time is not class time at all. It is homework, and it is an insult to my intelligence to pretend otherwise. Class time is a live teacher teaching my child." And this is all italicized. "And next year, my child will get much less of that, only four hours per day, when it used to be more than six. My child suffered this year," excuse me, "when it used to be more than six," end of italics. "My child suffered this year, as did many children, due to there being less actual instructional time with teachers. That was understandable and necessary during the pandemic. In the fall of 2021, it is neither. If I wanted to have my kid try to learn on their own without spending lifetime with a teacher, I would sign them up for a correspondence, correspondence course. Furthermore, the proposed quote-unquote 'flex' period that rotates between an indefinite number of possible classes asks high school students to have flawless organizational skills in order to keep track of everything, far, far more than I think is age-appropriate. This, this is asking the children to practice executive functioning on a level that most freshmen in college could not handle. While I'm, I am certain that this is not the intent, that the effect of this change would be to make, for instance, AP classes less accessible to those without significant resources. Students lacking significant supports out of school or non-neurotypical students who would otherwise be capable of handling the classwork will not be able to access these classes due to the barrier that this quote-unquote 'flexibility' will impose and the burdens it places on the students. My child suffered due to the understandable, necessary impositions of the pandemic this year and has been looking forward to returning to school full-time as normal. I do not understand why that is not possible. I do not understand why so many changes are being made that, whatever their intentions, have the effect of depriving students of actual face-to-face live instructional time with teachers and forcing students to juggle a complex administrative nightmare in order to take their quote-unquote 'desired' classes." End of comment.
Okay, next comment, please.
Our next comment is from Kathleen McCullough, located at 727 Mason Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 5:57 PM via email regarding the Instruction and Curriculum Report. The comment begins, "Hello, I'd like to comment on agenda item number ten. Would you be willing to consider postponing the adoption of the new schedule for one school year? I feel as if the kids really do need to return back to normal for at least one year before instituting such a major change. Also, as a parent, I would also like more time to absorb the information and have time to ask questions. I posed questions to the school board about six weeks ago regarding the schedule change. My email got an immediate response. And Dan McGary scheduled a meeting for me, Ms. Mertens, Dr. Manfree, Mr. Bennett, and Ms. Simone. I was assured at that time that the school had decided, decided not to proceed with this schedule change. Therefore, I did not follow up with the questions I had. Only six short weeks later, this is now on the voting block. As a result, I feel like there is a serious lack of transparency and some unknown reason to push this agenda, to push this through very quickly with little input from the community. Thank you in advance for your consideration. End of comment."
Okay, Dr. Garrett, did you want to respond to that question?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I guess it's more Mrs. McCullough, I think I've had conversation with Mrs. McCullough, and her, her student is here, a wonderful student here in the school district. I believe that meeting was with Ms. Simone, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Dr. Manfree, Ms. Mertens. I think at the time, there wasn't a decision on what was happening with this schedule, and I think the conversation was no decision had been made at this point in time. I also think at that time, to Mrs. Hag, Dr. Hague's comment earlier this evening, I apologize, Dr. Hague's comment earlier this evening, about taking things into consideration and not having drastic scheduling changes, I think I've made this clear in the past. This is, this schedule was really a combination of what other, others on that scheduling committee wanted to have. One of the initial objectives and goals was reduce, to reduce the number of students on campus and to move away from a block schedule to a period-year-long schedule. I think at the time when that comment came up, Mr. Finch, there was a presentation given to the public that the district was not going to move in a direction of a period schedule, a year-long schedule, nor were they going to bring students in cohorts, a third at a time. And I think that is what Ms. Simone, Dr. Manfree, Ms. Mertens, and Mr. Bennett, I wasn't in the meeting, but I was debriefed after that, that that was what they had explained. Nonetheless, I think this is superintendent of schools speaking, obviously. I, I don't, I don't know that, you know, a decision to table it tonight, you know, obviously, if that's the decision that's made, that's a decision that's made. I think to say that we're going to come back six months from now or seven months from now, when the sleep study rears its, you know, ugly head again, it will gain momentum, that all of a sudden, after we've got these students back into school with a schedule they're just used to again, that we're all of a sudden going to turn around and say, okay, now let's look at changing the schedule again. I think the administration's thought process has been, and I'm proud of the administration, that they were not resting on their heels during the pandemic. They were continuing to work on the projects they've been asked to work on, and they provided a plan that would meet with part of that sleep study realistically. And I think, I think that was the overarching goal. I do understand Mrs. McCullough, she's been a great parent, her child's a great student here in the school district, so I understand their perspective. I understand Ume's comments earlier tonight. We're trying to make a schedule that meets with all the demands on us as an administration as well. So my, my comment would be, I appreciate your thoughtfulness and your comments. Pushing it back a week or two or three months, first pushing it back two weeks, the high school administration could not complete the schedules on time, and then we'd have a problem going into next school year. Tabling it and bringing it up for further review, I don't know that we really could go out in the middle of next school year and then make another scheduling change. I don't know how positive that will, or well-received that would be either.
Thank you very much for addressing that, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford, next comment, please.
Our next comment is from Joanne Namavong, located at 133 North Pennick Avenue in Upper Darby. The comment was received on the first at 6:12 PM via email regarding the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Comment reads, "As many of you are aware, I am very outspoken at this school district and try to advocate for the needs of," caps, "all the students in our district. So once more, I will share my concerns about this schedule." Excuse me. "I am happy to see this revised schedule in which lunch, homeroom is combined with the flex period. This is an important change that will not only reduce food waste in the building, but also will promote a healthier way of eating. We would no longer have to worry about students eating in the hallways and leaving possible hazardous conditions when food is dropped and/or spilled. Thank you for making this change. My other main concern, which I have discussed with Dr. McGary, is the issue of whether the classes that are rostered will include both virtual and in-person students, as is done now. For this current school year, this situation was unavoidable, as the school had no idea who was coming back and who wasn't. For the 21, 22 school year, there should be ample time to gather this information. Parents should really be asked about that, caps, now, so that virtual-only or in-person-only sections could be created and the students be rostered accordingly. We know there are currently many sections of all the main classes, math, English, social studies, and science, so this could easily be accomplished. Specialty classes such, like music and art should be in-person-only classes. Our school district has taken tremendous steps to make our school buildings, a, caps, safe place to learn. It is not uncommon at all for schools to provide virtual learning, but to offer these specialty classes as an in-person only. I don't know if this concern is actually a part of what you are voting for, but if under this plan, the classes will continue to be as they are now, then I urge you, vote no on this schedule change. We need to remember, caps, all the students, not just those who want virtual learning. End of comment."
Dr. McGary, you want to?
Yeah, over the years, I've really appreciated Mrs. Namavong's input. She attends a lot of district functions, home and school meetings, and I always appreciated her reaching out. I'm very appreciative that she was willing to have a phone conversation with me. I forget what week, what week it was. I think it was last week. Sorry, the weeks are kind of running together. But it was a really productive conversation. She expressed concerns, rightfully so, and we went through, we processed through a lot of items. And this one in particular, I told her I would definitely, you know, give her credit. Through that conversation, we talked about how we can process through this together. And I had a conversation with Ms. Simone, Mr. Finch, Dr. Manfree. Just so happened, Ms. Simone and Mr. Finch were already processing on their own as well. We are looking to try to create a couple different ideas. One would be a virtual synchronous pathway only. That's option one, where if enough students are opting for virtual synchronous instruction, we could create a pathway for those students. Obviously, there'd be new rules as well, cameras on, certain parameters we're going to have in place for students who will remain virtual next year, based on the feedback from students and community members as well. Option two, we would be, you know, based on enrollment numbers, and we're doing it now. We are going to be putting out a communication, asking for, for parents to respond to us on a school-by-school level what their options would be for next school year. We would be looking into next school year about, okay, these are the only classes that we're able to run virtual synchronous. And to Mrs. Namavong's point, we believe that we'll be creating a new course selection guide that would say, these courses can run virtual synchronous, and some of these are really best in person. And so moving forward, it's best that you do come in for some of these classes, and some of these classes are virtual synchronous if you need to. These are things that we've done in the past as well already, prior to the pandemic, so that would not be new. The third option obviously comes down to running classes. We don't know at this time how many students for next school year will want to remain virtual synchronous students. It could come down to, let's say, a specific class that has twenty-eight students in it, and the majority of the students want to be virtual, and only some of the students, but it's like sixteen kids, seventeen kids. That doesn't mean our minimum class size of about twenty-five of running a class. And some of the students that are in person want to take the class, but in speaking with the students, the teacher, and their families, we may run a class to get it to the certain number because the virtual students and the in-person students are willing to work together in that two-type of instructional model, in-person and synchronous. together in that two-type of instructional model, in-person and synchronous. What's the point? The point is, we're working hard to try to create three different learning models to try to make a schedule that would not have synchronous and in-person students in the same class together and the teacher teaching that. There may be times, however, when parents and students and teachers want a class to run, because otherwise it wouldn't run unless the virtual students and the in-person students could be there together, or vice versa. So again, the administration has spent probably, that was probably an hour and a half call as an administration, and I think I spoke to Mrs. Ms. Namavong for 40 minutes at least. And I'm proud that we're going to problem-solve and try to make that happen. So that the answer is, we're going to try our best to create a high school pathway with three different learning options.
Superintendent Dr. McGary, could you speak to how, I think, part of the plan that the school district has looked into is creating a pathway for students that want to remain virtual within the district instead of going outside the district into a virtual charter school?
Board President Brown, is it okay?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure. Yes, Board Member David Neal, sure, a good comment. I forget what year it was, but several years ago, the school district used about $189,000 of its own money to purchase what were, at the time, we were coming out of a product called GPA, Global Personalized Learning, academic learning that was going out of business. And so we didn't have any money, budgeting was a problem at that time, so we took our homebound instruction money, we purchased Pearson licenses, it was about $189,000 at the time. The sole intent of that was to create our own cyber academy to recruit cyber charter school students. As we know, the original cost was $800,000, and we're now upwards of over $11 million for charter schools. In Upper Darby alone, it's over 400 students. In Upper Darby High School, there's 183 students pre-pandemic that wanted to be asynchronous only. Actually, now that they know that we could do synchronous, they would probably prefer synchronous, some of them as well. So in total, you're looking at 583 some-odd students that, in the school district alone, want that type of learning. We don't know what's going to happen coming out of the pandemic, and the concern becomes, if you don't provide this for me, which was happening to us before we created our own program, if you don't do this, I'm going to leave and go to a charter school. And then the cost for a special education student or general education student are a lot higher. Many superintendents in the Commonwealth have come together and asked for charter school reform, cyber charter school reform. We believe we can do as well, if not better, of a job. We believe that our costs are far less than a cyber charter school. And so our process is that we've created this program to compete. Otherwise, if there are, continue to be a number of students leaving the school district for those learning options, we could be in a situation where we're putting $2 million more into our budget for cyber charter schools and charter schools in general, that we're looking at cutting programs. Again, in a perfect world, every kid comes back to school, and we're functioning that way. And we don't have the capacity issues, the space issues, and these different learning environment instructional models that families want. And so that's the answer, Mr. Neal, that there are financial considerations that we're trying to do this within our budget, and by the way, we're not cutting any high school program. No high school programs are being cut, and this schedule change is not to reduce staff or to cut programs.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. And thank you, President Brown.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Neal. Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford, next comment?
Our next comment is from Cynthia Tully located at 3406 Berkeley Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 6:41 PM via email regarding the curriculum and instruction report. The comment begins, "I am very concerned with this new schedule and how it is supposed to help the kids. This is a horrible idea with cutting down, with cutting down time and having to eat during the flex period. As a whole, you haven't given the kids enough thought and time to this schedule. I please ask that, as a board, you vote no for the new schedule, and please think about the kids that you claim you care about." End of comment.
Next comment, Ms. Buford.
Our next comment is from Elona Shabani located at 290 Child's Avenue in Drexel Hill. This comment was received on the first at 7:05 PM via email. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, that is a general comment.
I think it's number seven.
Our next comment is from Victoria Zimmerman located at 611 Edmonds Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 7:10 PM. This is a student, and the comment is received, is concerning the curriculum and instruction report. The comment begins, "Given that the skinnies in the morning will be taught asynchronously, this means half of the AP curriculum will not be learned through teacher instruction. Some students take multiple of these courses, and there is not enough time for them to learn every other day during the flex period. On top of this, the blocks are still 19 minutes less than they were during the pre-pandemic schedule. If the skinny slot is given during the spring, this means that leading up to the AP test, little to no teacher instruction or feedback will be given, not giving equal opportunity for students to achieve a high score on the test. I know that the UD school board is striving for equity, and I want to ensure that it's, that is given. Please explain the impact that was taken into consideration for the, those students." End of comment.
Dr. McGary, I'm going to ask you to speak to that. I know it was spoken to earlier, but I'd like--
Yeah, I think, again, there's other comments that are coming in tonight, too, that English students will not have, all English ninth graders and 10th grade students are not going to have direct instruction. Again, to the comment about the AP curriculum, all AP curriculum, when the students come in for in-person learning and they're, when they come in from the morning time, will get direct instruction in their courses. Any course that a student has rostered on his or her schedule, their schedule, will be in-person. Art, music, AP, social studies, science, whatever, students who want to come in for in-person instruction, their AP courses will. What I think the high school is saying is that they're providing that skinny period, it was really an important part of their putting this schedule together, is to still provide additional learning. And again, to make this point, Upper Darby is one of few, if not the only that I know around at this time, that provides that additional support above and beyond the general AP class. So that's important, that we're providing those at that additional time, and the high school team has found a way to do that. Very few, if any, school districts that we researched have that currently in their schedule. In fact, some schools do it after school, and they have to pay staff to come in and tutor students after school. We provide that during the school day here in the high school.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford?
Our next comment is from Kate Smith located at 4716 Cedar Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 7:13 PM via email regarding the instruction and curriculum report. The comment begins, "The proposed schedule is a cut to instructional time. As was acknowledged during the committee meeting, students used to be able to attend four block periods and two skinny periods per week at a minimum. Under the proposal, they will only have one skinny, now termed quote-unquote 'flex period,' per week, and must rotate attendance through the range of skinny opportunities. Pre-pandemic, the students could attend two enrichment or support periods for 42 minutes five days per week. Now they would only attend each opportunity for half the time and for fewer minutes each time. If the intent isn't to cut but to add flexibility, add a second flex period and restore the minutes. Please reject this proposal and make it clear that, on behalf of your constituents, you expect a more transparent process with regard to explaining the trade-offs." End of comment.
Dr. Gary?
Yeah, I'm sure that the high school administration, who really worked on the schedule, can answer this as well, but there's some comments in there that I understand there's frustration, there's concern, you know, obviously, Ms. Smith is a concerned resident and has had great students come to the school district, so we respect the comments that come in, come in. Again, Mr. Finch said earlier tonight that, in his review of this, only 20 students have taken us up on that opportunity. I think there's a little bit of information where we're actually making students give up a lunch period, so it's not actually technically a normal schedule. Students actually forego their lunch to get a second skinny. So we have students here at the high school who have taken on additional time, and on one hand, we're being told 10, 20 minutes of time for lunch needed more, and then we have students, when we met with them and talked to them, some of them don't even eat lunch here, or they're eating lunch in their other classrooms. So we feel like we've provided this opportunity, and almost every single student in an AP course will get that additional support in an in-person rotation and provide additional help. I don't know, Mrs. Simone and Mr. Finch, if you want to comment on that, but--
Yeah, I could comment on that, Dr. McGary. I, one thing that I want to point out about this comment is, they mentioned that students could take four blocks and two skinny periods at a minimum. And the fact of the matter, you know, that's really at a, at an absolute maximum. So in our pre-pandemic schedule, as I mentioned, you know, earlier, students could possibly, if their AP courses or their extra supports are lined up right in the skinny periods, that's one thing that we're kind of missing out on, those, those skinnies had a lineup perfectly for this to happen. Students could opt out of taking a lunch and forego to lunch and participate in those skinny periods. Now, I talked earlier about how there were very few students that were doing that, and the point I want to make here is, the reason there are so few students that are taking us up on this offer is, it's hard to overstate how challenging and packed a schedule like this is, okay? So if a student would do that and take the two skinny periods without their lunch, and then their four blocks in addition to that for a school year, that would result in them having a schedule that is a total of 10 credits, okay? Now, to put that in perspective, students only have to average five and a quarter credits per year to meet Chapter 4 Pennsylvania Graduation Guidelines. Okay, so what that means is, a student who is doing that, taking us up on that offer and, you know, foregoing lunch and doing that packed schedule, has a 10-credit schedule, which is almost double what they need for, you know, the Chapter 4 Graduation Guidelines in the state of Pennsylvania. So it's a very, very challenging schedule, and it's very packed, and it's something that a very, very small percentage of our student population actually takes advantage of. You know, and additionally, I did talk earlier about this, but I will mention it again, we're hearing a lot from the student, you know, the segment of the population whose AP courses lined up perfectly in those skinny periods and got them scheduled like that. What we aren't hearing about is how much of a conflict those skinny periods represent and stood in the way of some kids getting the actual, all of the AP courses and other, you know, supports that they wanted scheduled, because those skinnies had to line up perfectly in our pre-pandemic schedule. With the inclusion of the flex period in our new schedule, that takes that issue out of, you know, out of consideration. They can get any, any combination of APs that run in a semester in there, and that's about it.
The only other thing I would like to add is, prior to this recommended change and, you know, pre-pandemic, like Mr. Finch said, there were conflicts, even with the music situation, and the fact that the music is now being offered in, you know, the block or, you know, in the block period, it will also allow students that, you know, had conflict with music and lunch and AP courses and some, you know, receiving gifted services. So we believe that this is actually going to help provide that flexibility, and I just want to make it clear that, and I know Dr. McGary said this earlier, but having taken courses in your lunch period wasn't part of our normal course selection. That wasn't something that, you know, we recommended or something that was part of our normal course selection. Yes, families could opt to do that, students could opt to do that, but we, I just want to make it clear that that wasn't part of our normal course selection. And so I just want to, you know, emphasize that there were conflicts prior. This schedule isn't causing conflicts. There were conflicts prior, and I do believe that this is actually going to help students and not hinder them.
Thank you very much, Ms. Simone. Ms. Buford?
Our next comment is from Lori Patterson located at 717 Concord Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 9 o'clock PM via email regarding the instruction and curriculum report. The comment begins, "I am writing to urge you to not pass the proposed schedule for students for the 21-22 school year. There are many concerns and questions that I have heard raised and I have yet to, and have yet to be answered sufficiently. And as I write this, I am learning that the meeting is tonight, which means this will arrive too late to have an impact. I know it is quote-unquote 'on schedule,' referring to the meeting, but I am also certain most parents will be surprised to learn the vote has taken place already. Number one, there is a very practical problem that many parents will have, which is ensuring their kids get out of bed and to school successfully. The idea that the alarm is set for an hour or two later and a teenager will get himself up and out the door in time. Many kids are dropped off by their parents on the way to school. I suppose that some kids will have, will not have an issue with this, but for those of us whose kids still require a lot of parenting, this will be a significant struggle. Number two, there have been multiple reports that quote-unquote 'English' will be asynchronous for ninth and 10th graders. Please explain why and what the benefit/risk analysis says about this. Number three, from the presentation last week, it looks like quote-unquote 'seminar' would now become asynchronous. I can't begin to tell you how frustrating this is. Seminar is the one time my son gathers entirely with like-minded kids in school and has meant so much to him over the years. The interaction with the teachers and his peers is the entire value of the program. More self-directed busy work? No, thank you. Number four, there are many, many parents, some whom, like me, defenders of the district, who are actually doing the unthinkable, investigating alternate paths such as charter schooling. That sentence is very difficult for me to write, but this plan feels like it was slapped together in a way that is, and it seems like that's an incomplete sentence, I'm not sure. I will continue. I apologize for the hasty messaging. There are more questions and concerns, but bottom line, in caps, please vote no. End of comment.
Thank you, Ms. Buford. Dr. McGary?
Yeah, there's just a couple of comments. I did have a couple of email exchanges with Mrs. Patterson, so some of this is a little concerning to hear, to hear tonight. I will say that English IX and English X will not be an asynchronous class for all ninth and 10th graders. As we explained during the presentation previously, there are roughly 200 and some-odd incoming freshmen that need additional support. We are going to take the first half of the year for those students and rewrite an English class that provides a skill-based English IX program for the first half of the year, and they'll get some asynchronous support in their English class along with that class that we're going to rewrite, and then it'll flip the second half of the year where they'll come in for the direct English and Language Arts instruction. The first half of the year, they're going to get a program of Read 180 and System 44 to bring them up to speed, but it'll be in-person instruction, not for all ninth graders, not for all 10th graders. The other ninth graders who are on level will come in as they normally would for their English class and for their 10th grade class. The same conversation for the 10th grade curriculum, why are we doing that? We've seen some growth in the Read 180 program that's currently happening in a skinny, wrapped around a lunch period, but it warrants more time, so we can get these students in a 60-minute class instead of a 37-minute class. And we believe that we can get these incoming ninth graders into an English IX course that gives them the skills they need to move up faster, as we said last month, that will allow them to take higher classes. Instead of what's happening pre-pandemic, students have to take their ninth grade and their 10th grade to catch up, to get enough of the Read 180 under their belt to move themselves out of it, and we think that this is a positive move. That's, that's one of the, I think the misnomer is that, that's not true, that every ninth grader is taking, there's not asynchronous English IX happening for students or 10th grade. It's in-person instruction for all students. Some students are getting in-person instruction in English IX and 10th grade English based on their skills, but it is in-person instruction. Comment about seminar. My understanding, and Mr. Marshall, like, I'm not going to call on you or Mrs. Simone to answer this, because I think you already have, but correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is the schedule is tweaked in particular to make sure that gifted students in seminar provided an in-person opportunity for students. It is not asynchronous. So seminar students, gifted students, have in-person instruction, not asynchronous instruction. And so I see, go ahead, Mrs. Simone.
No, I just want to say that's correct. It was actually one of the, you know, considerations, and we got a lot of feedback. We met with the gifted teachers multiple times, Mr. Marshall, myself, and it was very critical that, that we provided in-person services. And I just want to make sure that we're clear, sometimes students, you know, with their gifted services, depending on the level of courses that they take, again, that was something that they had to balance prior to the pandemic. Some students, you know, did receive it every day, some students did not, depending on their, you know, their level of need. So that is a balance that the gifted teachers worked with the students, depending on their schedule and where that service was best provided. But that is correct, Dr. McGary. That is part of the rotation in the flex period in person.
Thank you, Ms. Simone. Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford, does that complete the public comments on this topic? I know there's other general comments, and we'll get to them later, but does that complete the comments on this-- the comments on this particular report?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we've had some very good comments and engaging comments from both the board and the public, and I think we're now ready to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
This is Director War Savage. I oppose the portion of the report addressing the high school schedule as stated for reasons I've shared previously, but I approve of the remainder of the report.
Thank you, sir. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, the personnel report, please. Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. The personnel report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. Before I move for its adoption, I just want to congratulate our retirees on their retirement, and we hope that you have a safe and healthy retirement, and thank you for your service to the district. With that being said, I move for its adoption as stated.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Beaufort. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The policy report, Mr. Desnoyers?
Thank you, President Brown. There are four policies up for a first reading this evening. No vote is required to briefly discuss the changes. Policy 246 is being updated to reduce the minimum time for lunch, and as was discussed at this evening's meeting, the new high school schedule has decided to use a longer-than-10-minute lunch, so this minimum won't, will not apply. And for the second reading, when this policy goes through a second meeting, second reading, the minimum lunch period may be raised. Policy 800.1, electronic signatures and records, a policy is being implemented governing electronic signatures and records as they are becoming more widespread. Policy 816, district social media, this is a new policy, and it governs district-owned social media platforms. Social media platforms can be either public forums in which public posting and commenting is enabled, or non-public forums where posting and commenting by the public is disabled. And this policy gives the district the authority to declare certain platforms as non-public forums. Currently, the only platform where that is the case is YouTube. And following practices in which the district already engages, this policy allows certain events, including the school board meetings and school board committee meetings and other live-streamed events, be non-public forums during which posting and commenting is disabled And it should be noted that the district will review comments and remove any comments which fall into any one of 13 categories indicating a violation of law, regulation, or district policy. The board does remind the appropriate parties in particular that policies relating to freedom of speech and/or expression are pertinent. In Policy 916, changes are being added that specifically prohibit discrimination in the school environment and all district programs for volunteers, and some require, and changes to some policy language requiring certification for district volunteers. The more detailed, a more detailed summary of changes is posted to Board Docs. And then, for the policy report second reading, the policy report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Desnoyers. Are there any comments from the board?
Mr. Brown, President Brown, I would like to make a brief comment.
Sure, please, sir. Go ahead.
The changes to Policy 121 in the second report are up for a second reading, so if approved by the board, they will go into effect, and a summary of the changes is posted to Board Docs. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Beaufort. Are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, next, the transportation report, please. Mrs. Williams?
The transportation report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second, this is Director War Savage.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public, Ms. Beaufort?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Mr. Fields, the facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report, please.
Thank you, Board President Brown. The facilities report, the use of facilities report, and the donation report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Thank you. I have the first comment from the board on the use of facilities report. There's a line item for the Delaware County Black Caucus, which I am an active member of, so I recuse myself from the use of facilities report. Are there any other comments from the board?
Thank you so much. I just want to draw everyone's attention on the use of facilities report to an LGBTQ pride event being held at the high school on June 27th. My understanding is that the organizers are working super hard to get a bunch of stakeholders involved to put on a really nice event, and I guess this would be a really good opportune time to say happy pride to everyone, and please get involved in as many events as possible.
Thank you very much, Mr. War Savage. Just to clarify from my recusal of the use of facilities report, just that one line item for the, I think it's two rows, two community events for the Delaware County Black Caucus, but I do, I'm on board with the rest of it, okay? Any other comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Beaufort, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Hey, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. The food services report, please. Mr. Fields?
The food services, I'm sorry. The food services report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Beaufort, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Dr. Hague, the finance and budget report, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The finance and budget report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Beaufort, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Okay, now we are at the time of the meeting for the collateral assignment reports. We will start with the Delaware County Community College. Vice President Curry, please.
Thank you, Board President Brown. We received a letter today, all the liaisons, from the Office of the President at the Delaware County Community College regarding a letter that was sent out to the counselors. The letter is as stated, "I hope this communication finds you well as we approach the end of the 2020-2021 academic year. I wanted to make you aware of a free and academically valuable opportunity that may be of interest to some of your students. Some of you may be aware that the college has been offering a summer bridge program for a number of years. This program offers students who have placed into developmental courses to the opportunity to enroll in these courses in the summer tuition-free while getting the structure and additional support that many students need. By participating in this program, students will learn academic and time-management skills while also working with career counselors to explore career options. Additionally, successful students can begin the fall semester in college-level courses. In the past, this program was reserved for students who qualified for Act 101, a state-funded program, starting late June 2021. Participation in the college summer bridge program is being expanded to all students regardless of Act 101 eligibility. Best of all, it is free, and they give ways to be able to contact," and that letter was sent to the counselors today."
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Does that complete your report?
That completes my report. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you very much. The Delaware County Intermedia, please. Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. I have no report tonight. This is an unusual month because the board meets the first Tuesday. Our meeting is tomorrow night, so I will have a report in July.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Legislative Council, Mr. Neal?
Thank you, President Brown. I don't have a written report for you, but I just want to remind you, things are chugging along in Harrisburg. A lot of bills are still kind of in limbo, waiting to be passed, the ones that we support, and also the budget in which Governor Wolf has proposed a significant increase in funding through K-12 with the backing of the PA Democratic Party that has reached opposition from the PA Republican Party in Harrisburg. So I encourage residents throughout the state, you know, and upper Arby, to contact their legislators, which I know Mike Zabel and Margaret Davidson are both huge supporters of increasing K-12 funding, and they do support Governor Wolf's K-12 funding.
Thank you very much, Mr. Neal. Does that complete your report?
It does, yeah. Thank you, President Brown.
Okay, Vice President Curry, I think you have an addendum?
Yes, I have an addendum to that. I just wanted to just make the public aware that the DCIU legislative branch held their breakfast. That was two Fridays ago, I believe, and most of the board members and Dr. McGary were present, and also we were acknowledged as having the most legislative presence there for the breakfast, so thank you for your continued support on the legislative council.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. I got them to acknowledge at the end of the meeting how many people of us were there.
Yeah, thank you, Vice President Curry. I wasn't able to attend that, so I did forget about that. Thank you for mentioning that, and I think in the beginning, we were, we had low numbers register, then at the end, we came in swinging, so we had those high numbers, so it was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee?
Thank you, President Brown. The awards ceremony was last week, but I did just want to acknowledge the Mendenhall Tyson award recipients, who were Henna Ansari, who's going to UPenn, Tina Chabane, who's going to New York University, our very own Ume Siddiqua going to UPenn, and also Margaret Smith going to Lehigh University. I think we saw all of those students, of course, were in the 5% presentation earlier tonight, and we saw just how incredibly amazing they are, and as has been said before, makes, really, really makes some of us feel a little bit inadequate, but we're so incredibly proud of them and wish them very well next year and in the coming years.
Thank you, Dr. Hague, and thank you for serving on that committee. I think you guys did a great job picking worthy recipients of those, of our most prestigious awards, so thank you for your service. Home and School, Mr. War Savage?
Thank you, President Brown. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you very much. PSBA representatives, Mr. Desnoyers or Mr. War Savage, do you have anything?
I do not have any updates for PSBA.
Okay, thank you. Policy liaisons, anything, Mr. Desnoyers or Mr. Neal?
I do have something for policy.
Please proceed.
So, since the pandemic started, the board has implemented several new practices in how it runs meetings. For this reason, the board wishes to review and possibly update the policies that govern school board, school board committee, and special voting meetings. The best way to accomplish this is to have a full board discussion of the policies that govern meetings. These policies include Policy 003, functions, Policy 005, organization, Policy 006, meetings, Policy 006.1, attendance at meetings via electronic communications, and Policy 903, participation in board meetings. Additional policies may be considered if impacted, and potential new policies governing meetings may be discussed. This full board discussion of meeting policies will occur during the June 15 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. The board members responsible for policy, that is, School Director David Neal and myself, will present examples of language the board may wish to adopt and issues board members may wish to consider. The purpose of the full board discussion is to give the policy liaisons information which will inform potential updates to the policies listed above and possibly others. Input from the district community is welcome in accordance with Policy 903, public participation in board meetings. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. This concludes my update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Desnoyers. We really appreciate your diligence and your expertise in the policy area. Thank you for your work. Communications, sorry about that. Communications, Mrs. Mitchell and Dr. Hague?
Thank you, President Brown. We continue to send out our monthly updates. I did just want to highlight that one thing we had added was a reminder that people can share with their fellow community members that you don't have to be a district family, you don't have to have students in the district to receive these updates, and so I just want to encourage people. I know sometimes we hear that families that, or individuals who don't have kids in the district don't necessarily hear as much, don't know what's going on, and they are still community members and they are still taxpayers, and so I just wanted to point that out.
point that out, that that's in the, it's at the top of the update, and that's something that people can share with their, their neighbors and friends, and that, of course, you can also find it on the website under community, the Community Bulletin Board has a link to sign up and receive those, that information.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary, for that communications report. I think that completes our, I'm sorry? Yeah, it was nothing. I didn't. Old business. Is there any old business from Board members?
I'm not sure if this is old business or, I guess it's old business. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of meeting again with our Upper Darby High School GSA under the direction of Allison Maddox, and we had an awesome conversation that touched on two main items. One, the grassroots activism that the Upper Darby community showed in removing a piece of LGBTQ-centered bigotry from our own ordinances, that stipulated that homosexuality was a mark of perversion. In other words, the community found that intolerable, and thanks to our friends on council, on a bipartisan basis, they struck that from their rulebooks. So that was awesome to share with our GAT students, and I also let them know that the, that there are Pride celebrations happening in Upper Darby, and I encouraged them to use their platform and their voices to take as much part in those opportunities as possible, and they were able to share with me as well that they were working on a, an equity project, a presentation, I believe, that they were going to give or have given up to this point for faculty members so that they are more empowered to support LGBTQ students district-wide from elementary school all the way on up.
Thank you very much for that report, Mr. War Savage. Is any, any other old business from Board members? Okay, hearing none. Is there any new business from Board members? Okay. Hearing none. We are now at the time for public, oh, sorry. Dr. McGary, yes, please. New business?
I have two, I have two items. If, and Solicitor Kyle Berman, you can weigh in and help me navigate the best way to handle these. I have provided the Board with two updates, and I apologize the timing of these. Obviously, it's, it's toward the end of the school year, but I just wanted to see if I can get Board's support. One of them is the Angela Duckworth study on gratitude. Angela has been a friend of ours for a long time. She's given a lot to the school district. She'll be meeting with students this summer, athletes. She's willing to give her time for free to talk to kids about goal setting. She's also reached out to us about a gratitude study with the Character Lab at the University of Pennsylvania, where she'd be working with Mrs. Simone in the high school on a study where kids would send a letter of gratitude and appreciation to teachers that they've had here at the high school as they leave. We need, we need your support to be able to do that. That's item number one. And the second item is Young Men/Women in Charge is an affiliation that does summer camps and summer outreach here in the school district, and we work with them to provide these learning opportunities, mentorship programs here in the school district. They reached out to my office for a grant opportunity that would award, has the potential to bring $1.6 million a year, each year over six years, to the school district. Ms. Kelly, Ms. Christine Kelly and I, as long with Wendy Elgart, met with the organization, provided with that input. Our support for that would be some kind of an in-kind contribution, meaning the use of our facilities, where we would target middle school students and younger students on setting college and career pathways, and that money would go to those learning opportunities for families and for students outside of school. So each one of those separately, and Kyle, you can weigh in, and I'm asking for the Board on one hand to approve our research study with Angela Duckworth, and then the second one would be getting a letter of support from the Board to go after partnering with Young Men/Women in Charge for the grant opportunity that's in front of us.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGary. Do we simply need to approve it under new business? I mean, do we, do we poll the Board? I guess Mr. Berman can weigh in. How do we weigh in on that and give the approval that Dr. McGary seeks?
The, the process is simply that the various people that wish to conduct studies have the materials to the administration. At this point, the administration would simply seek a motion from the Board and then have the motion voted on to approve the, these individuals to conduct studies, the studies that are listed at the district. But then, you know, the, just, the Board has to actually consider that and vote on it, too.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berman. Dr. Haig, I think you had a comment?
Well, should, should we first make, should I make a motion? Should we make a motion first and then we'll have comments? So, so I move to approve the two studies described by Superintendent McGary?
Second.
The one, the...
I think we want to do them one at a time, right? Let's do them one at a time.
Okay, so, so I move to, I move to approve the Angela Duckworth study on gratitude.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so I heard a motion and a second. So, all those in favor?
Comment on that?
Oh, comments, I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to make a really brief comment that, you know, for people who aren't super into like social science research, that, that gratitude is just really coming out as this really, really huge factor in, in life and all of these sort of executive function skills, all those soft skills, and if, and if I can make a podcast recommendation, if you don't listen to Hidden Brain, which is an NPR podcast, he's got a really great episode on, on gratitude that I'll go ahead and plug, but I'm just really excited about this for that reason.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for that particular, Ms. Mitchell?
Yeah, I actually want to piggyback off of that. I was going to say something very similar, but also just recently I listened to another podcast with Angela and Brene Brown, and as we all know, we, as a Board, read her book, Dare to Lead, and the, they talked a lot about gratitude, and she's very down-to-earth. I think she'll really work with our students in a great way through this study, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. And are there any other comments from the Board? I don't see anything in the chat. I'm looking around the room. I don't see anything. Okay. Ms. Buford, are, is there any public comment on this particular motion item regarding the study Angela Duckworth?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. So now I think we can vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain and state your name for the record. The Board approves. Dr. McGary, the motion carries.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'd like to make a motion for the grant opportunity with YMWIC. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, and thank you, Mr. Fields, for your aggressiveness. Are there any comments from the Board?
Second.
Yeah, we heard that. Are there any comments, comments from the Board? Hearing none. Oh, yes, please.
I'd like to say something. So I just want to thank this organization for so graciously considering Upper Darby. They are in other school districts and areas, and I know personally that they have a commitment to Upper Darby school districts, so I just want to say thank you to the organizers of this amazing organization and for their dedication to the school district.
Yes, I concur. I'm familiar with their founders, so great organization. Any other comments from the Board? Okay. Ms. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public about this agenda item.
Thank you very much. Now we're ready to vote. Are there any, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. The motion carries. Dr. McGary, the Board approves.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay. I think that was under new business. We are now at the time for the public hearing, Ms. Buford. We were both emailed and phoned comments, which are subject to the three-minute time limit. It must include the commenter's name and address. Please proceed, ma'am.
Our first comment is from Ilona Shabani, located at 290 Child's Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 7:05 PM via email, and it's a general comment. The comment begins, "When is Upper Darby School District opening up full-time and maskless? All the restrictions retained to capacity are lifted. Mask mandate ends June 28th. We need to be informed very soon. Our children are suffering. Online schooling is not school. It's a mental torture. My child is suffering. My child is falling behind in school. What is the school board doing to make up for all the kids who will 100% be lacking the learning skills needed for the upcoming school year? Masks don't work. Unmask our children. Open up all the schools full-time. Thank you. End of comment."
Last month during the superintendent's report, I, normally in June when we have the top 5%, I don't give a report, but I do want to say that I offered short-term and long-term plans for opening schools. Next year, kindergarten through eighth grade, we're opening for full in-person, every day of the week instruction. Obviously, I've made it known throughout the conversations, the high school schedule is something we were reviewing. Maskless and mask and wearing masks, maskless and wearing masks. We will be updating our health and safety plan probably June 15th. We're waiting for the Commonwealth to change their health and safety plan template, so we will probably be passing a resolution going into next fall about emergency response. We'll be, we'll be passing a health and safety plan, an athletic plan, and an instructional time template, guaranteeing that we meet the instructional hours and days of the week. As far as being maskless, at this time, we have not made a decision on being maskless next fall yet. However, we're aware of the fact that Governor Wolf is coming out on June 28th, removing mask requirements in all settings, as well as already alleviating the issues in capacity in schools. This is something we'll address with the Board probably on June 15th, if not in July, to make that decision moving forward. One of the caveats here in Upper Darby will be the number of 12 to 15-year-olds. If we can get to 70% of our 12 to 15-year-olds being vaccinated, I think we'll feel a lot better about that, a lot, a lot more safe about having our students in. However, with that said, we will be encouraging in the next fall, encouraging mask-wearing at a minimum. We are being, I'm hearing some reports that we could have a tough flu season next year, and we want to make sure that we, we get through next, next fall and next winter.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford, next comment?
Our next comment is from Kate Smith, located at 4716 Cedar Lane in Drexel Hill. The comment was received on the first at 1:31 PM via email. The comment begins, "Please reopen school board meetings to in-person public participation. The school board committee meetings in particular are supposed to offer an opportunity for dialogue. The current virtual format removes the respectful dialogue component of those meetings. The solely virtual participation by the public at both the regular monthly work sessions[1630.04][1630.04]/ meetings and the committee meetings also removes relationship-building opportunities for all of us. If you have not already, please advise the public as to when in-person meetings will resume." End of comment.
Dr. McGary, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, certainly. We're one of the few school districts that actually holds a July meeting. I'm sure this Board would like to not have a July meeting, but, but in Upper Darby, there's always things that come up, and we need those July meetings, and I think this Board is moving toward September. We'll be back for in-person meetings. I think what the Board is doing, I've been having conversations with Mr. DesNoire and Mr. Neal, who are the policy liaisons, about moving forward, how are we going to handle comments virtually as well as in-person, but I do know that this Board and this administration will be returning to in-person meetings in September.
Thank you very much, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford?
Our next comment is from Lee Jordan, located at 90 Pilgrim Lane in Drexel Hill. This comment was received on the first at 7:29 PM via email. The comment begins, "Good evening. Just wondering if the renovations have started at Aronomic Elementary School, because every time I walk around the school, I notice the freo plastering and stucco construction truck parked in the parking lot." Thank you. End of comment.
Dr. McGary?
Ms. Jordan, hope you're doing well. I don't know why the freo stucco construction truck's there, to be honest. We'll look into that. We have not started the project. We are having a ceremonial groundbreaking on June the 8th, and then we will look to hopefully begin breaking ground on June 15th or 16th.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Ms. Buford?
That concludes our comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, as always, for facilitating the comments and keeping us on track. We really appreciate that. Let's see, what's next? Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All right. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Thank you.[1772.73]